Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We will call our workshop session to order. And first, discussion regarding competitive safety schedule changes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city central has received quite a bit of updates since the last time they signed. As of now, there are some changes that came down from each department head. So, beginning of budget season, this was sent out to all the directors and we requested to see if they needed to increase or decrease any of their fees. There are some changes to the fire department. They no longer wish to rent out the room that they own inside the fire department. They felt that it raised some security risks and choose not to have anybody in there at normal rates. There have been some fee increases to almost everything in the aviation department. They took it to their board, went through it all, and have recommended some increases in that department. A introduction to a reinspection fee for building and planning. An introduction, sorry, I always forgets. An introduction to the electric tap fee. We have not had one in the past, so this will be a new fee that we're creating. The parks fees, just a small increase for the field fees, just for the complexes. And then an introduction to a participant fee at the, at the complexes. And the last one is the increase to the three-fourth inch meter costs for water meters and a decrease to the one-inch installation meter cost. Any questions?
Two-inch meter, why did that increase over half?
Just following with the questions are home yours.
The three-quarter went up a little, one-inch down a little, and two-inch down by about half.
Yes, sir.
Is that pretty standard with what other water companies are charging?
To tell you the truth, I have not looked. If we're using proprietary meter, I don't know if our meters are using the same meter or not.
How many two-inch should we put in?
We might have a hundred two-inch meters in system.
Okay.
Under parks, on page twenty-three. Who's the participant fee? Is that different?
I reinforce the participant fee.
So, this would be, if we were to host a tournament ourselves, this would be like a gate entrance fee. If you were to get into a ballgame or get into, like, a football game and they take up, you know, five, ten dollars at the, at the gate. Basically, if we were to host a tournament, this would be that entrance.
And then, how do we?
How do we enforce that without gates?
It would be taken, for example, if we were to try to implement this at the five-eighty complex, it would be taken just past the entrance way, when people are still in the gates.
And what is the cost of hiring someone who's standing there to do that?
It could be on a volunteer basis, but if not, it would be a city. This is something that...
Does it offset the cost of the participant fee?
It would.
I mean, that person, man. This is my question.
Typically, tournaments have five-eighty or running about eight-hundred to a thousand people right now. The terms that about three dollars each day would definitely offset that, I guess, on.
So, that participant fee, is that adult only or is that everyone?
We would be looking at anybody who is out of school age, so probably eighteen plus.
Would this also apply in the Turner Field?
This could apply to Turner Field, but we're looking at this in a broader scope. More so right now at the five-eighty complex, because that is where a lot of these large skill tournaments are happening. And it is causing the, the fields to have significant wear and tear. And so, we're trying to offset the cost of that, of that participant wear and tear right now.
So, we have a citizen, I think on the last council meeting that got up. And Aaron Citizen's comment said that during a tournament, there's going to cost like six to eight thousand dollars. That, that was not the fee schedule that we're looking at?
That was a proposed fee, a lot of times, different this time.
And that's what I wanted to make clear of, that that, those comments right there are pretty much null and void compared to what we have right now.
Absolutely.
And then, back to the, okay, you're saying participant fee. So, is that someone actually, are you going to charge thirty dollars for the kids on the field? Or you're going to charge thirty dollars for the people, the not participants, but the people watching?
We can change it to a spectator fee.
But now, in case of, okay, so if you change it to spectator fee, what, that contradicts what you just said. Because spectators aren't on the field making damage. Those are the kids that are playing and they're already paying to have that.
Correct.
So, and if, I don't see, I don't see, since we actually don't host a lot of these things, I don't see why we need this fee.
We are looking in the future to host a significant amount of these tournaments. We have a lot of inquiry right now. And so, we're trying to anticipate these large tournaments that are happening. Even just like two weekends ago, we had a tournament with forty-two teams in it at the five-eighty complex.
Who hosted it?
Um, the city did not host it due to the fact we don't have the manpower right now. Um, it was in the morning.
Who hosted it?
It was... I, it was a, it was a group off the board, but I cannot remember the exact name of the, of the group at the time, right now.
So, they would be the ones that would take the, because if we have a fee, then they would then charge that fee?
Correct.
But how would that benefit us?
We would be increasing, so right now, with these fees, we would be looking at around twelve hundred dollars to host a weekend tournament. And that's, right now, not covering the full cost of what it would take to rehabilitate some of these fields, especially with adult sports. And so, we are looking to try to find other ways to not charge a significant amount towards the tournament hoster. But a smaller amount to potentially maybe the parents of some of these kids. Or if it is an adult tournament, maybe some of the spouses or adult children.
So, I believe what we're trying to figure out is if we charge this three-dollar participant fee or spectator fee, and there's another organization like STS or, you know, something like that that's hosting the event, do they get that three-dollar fee or is it split with them and the city because they're running the gates or do we get all of them?
Yes. This is going to be solely for the city. For instance, I played traveling softball growing up. There's a tournament fee to enter the gates. And most time, it's upwards of ten, fifteen, twenty dollars per person. It's pretty expensive. This is an entrance fee for parents to come and watch their children play. It's not specifically for the person playing. The teams are not covering the cost of this. It's going to be each person, each adult that is coming into the complex to watch their children play.
But my question is, if they're remaining in the gates, they're collecting the money. Where does that money go?
Either, either it could be someone that's negotiating. It's up for negotiation.
So, what's the point in having it then? If it's up for negotiation and we don't have a plan?
Because, I mean, we can bring it back at a different time if that's what you're posing. We can, we can come up with a contract plan.
Well, I think, I definitely think something, because if, because your point is, because it really is no participant fee as a spectator fee.
Correct.
And whatever they choose to charge, because they could choose to charge, they're renting from us, they could choose to charge more. But then, you know, I, I do think, I think it needs a little more clarity.
My recommendation would be for this to be, if it's going to be a same fee, that it needs to be a city employee that's there taking the money. And I don't know that we should trust volunteers from, from other cities or anywhere.
Well, when you rent your facilities, you've rented your facilities. So, the organization is paying for those facilities. So, it should be the city employees having to spend the whole weekend out there because then you're shooting yourself in the foot, so then you're paying overtime and, you know, using city manpower. And granted, yes, you are going to have wear and tear on the fields when you're renting these things out, but that's part of the reason that you have the fees in the first place.
I think it would be more prudent to increase the rental fee of the facility. It would be to try and manage a participant.
And that is the goal of the increasing from the one-twenty-five to the one-fifty and then the thirty to forty on the ballfields and the sixty to seventy-five on the setup is because the unit cost of some of this equipment and some of these supplies, such as the paint and the chalk needed at these fields to paint the lines or whatever it may be, have increased these fees and not increased in quite a, quite a bit of time. And so, that, the idea was to kind of cost share that increase between participants and the, and the group itself, but, um, yeah.
The idea is to increase the cost to cover that.
Correct.
To get rid of the participant fee, because it doesn't make sense because of the way the targets, everything you just tried to exonerate.
Yes, sir.
Can we look at maybe some other communities like Cityville and Haysville?
They're ten dollars, spectator. Gates Bill's ten dollars, Glen Rose ten dollars.
I've explained it's rare to go to a separate city for a tournament and not pay an entrance fee.
How, how would you, I guess the big question, we're talking five-eighty, I assume. How would you, I guess, set up gates? Because that is a wide open area out there. And I'm just worried it would cause issues if we don't have some kind of tunnel where they can funnel in to pay the spectator. Because right now, it's not set up that way. So, what would the vision be to set it up to where you would be able to collect the spectator fee?
We can absolutely do some more research on this and bring it back out there. It does not have to be a municipal.
I don't think the complex is, I don't think the complex is very exactly set up for collecting these stuff for the fee. I mean, for example, if there's a tournament out there and I want to go ride my bike, I don't need to pay a spectator fee because I'm not going to lost again, going to ride my bike. So, if you're collecting it at five-eighty or they're closed, I shouldn't be responsible for that. Now, if everybody in the world can come in with their bike in the back of their car and say, "I'm going to ride my bike," and they're actually all in the game, so.
I have seen this before where you get a wristband or a stamp or something along those lines. You have somebody that's after the little...
You have the largest period.
You're correct. There's a lot of manpower that goes into being a tournament like that.
Absolutely. And plus, the same way on five-eighty, when you also have Turner Field and you have Galloway and all the other fields, I don't think it makes sense to single up one of the, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense. Because you're either going to have a spectator fee or you're not. And then, when, you know, when you go to other tournaments, it wasn't the city running the tournaments. Because my kids get some foul ball too. Yes, we didn't pay to get in, but we paid whoever was running it. We didn't pay the city of Georgetown or anything like that. So, I think the city having to man it doesn't make sense.
The question is the collection. That's, I don't think it's the idea, it's could be the collection. That's could be the big question.
We can do some more research on it.
Yeah, I think it's the process and procedures to kind of make all this stuff happen on a good, consistent basis for, for our services.
You can look at a contract for that if that's a route which is true.
Very, very good points, discussion.
I'd like to go with big eleven. Consider chapter eighteen, buildings and building regulations. Eight, you are paying your reinspection fee at twenty-five dollars. And fifty dollars for each additional reinspection. Yeah, I'm pretty against this just because of the fact, other cities I've worked in, you'll have, and it's multiple, not just, not just one other city, multiple other cities. You'll have an inspector that tries to, to create income off of this. And, you know, he'll walk into a job and he'll see one thing and he'll turn out the, that's a reinspection fee. You know, I don't think we have anybody like that on a, moving forward down the road. I just want to be ahead of that and not, uh, create an opportunity for people to be overpaying, you know what I mean?
I had, I had heard that there's still complaints that there is that possibility and it can be very biased one way or the other. Because there's a lot of dead call-ups into that, it would be very cautious about things like that.
What is it, Beritah, what do they do right now?
They don't charge.
They don't charge, I think.
Yeah. And, and they don't charge the city for reinspection fees from my understanding, so what?
They don't now because we don't currently charge reinspection fees. It could potentially be something that's worked out in a contract by the date, but as of right now, there is no reinspection in front of your bare ass.
They don't charge in the county either or anywhere else that I work with them. I mean, if we're going to go that route, then I would, you know, I would think after, you know, like after the first three or something, or the first five, then, you know, if you just have a contractor that's not doing a job and expecting the city to, you know, do their punch list, well, I can, I can see that. But, you know, if you have somebody that legitimately just missed something and they've got to pay a fee to get, come back, you know, it can just go off.
And I think that that's the purpose of this, from my understanding, if a contractor is missing that, not going to fail with it or shit, not a time. But I, I would restructure that.
Your recommendation would be after the third sale?
I think that's pretty fair.
And to go up each additional time at that point or just one fee across?
I mean, I'm probably, I'm probably on that. I mean, if, if you, I mean, I guess, you know, I get your point where if you have a contractor that's, you know, you get him to come back and re-inspect a dozen times, that's going to cost a lot of manpower. And so, if we go up after the third one, then a lot, lot of fire under, under the gate, correct?
I mean, if you fail for inspections, you probably should get the talk up.
That is a problem that we're running into is it's essentially being used as a check that's not punchless. I want the city to do the work for them.
Do you want to keep the fee the same or raise it with the third? Because you want to do some kind of a deterrent if that's what they're going to use for punches?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, maybe fifty to seventy-five. In fact, I think Hoppers Cove, they're in, maybe Burney and Burnet, I think they're seventy-five for reinspection. And one of those cities is where it's...
Every city that I looked at was in the upper tiers of seventy-five.
I have a question on the airport. We have six or seven fees there that we're not working for. I'm on page five.
You've been someone to the podium?
Five, page five, at the bottom, under fourteen G through L. I'm sorry, I'm saying ten of the packet, page five, the, the table. Under, um, under the jet pod, box hanger or something new that you have there. Can you explain and give a little bit of background on why it's needed now?
Explain the...
The charges, the fees.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Well, the jet pod is a unique space. It has a sixty-five-foot bi-fold electric door on one side. It has a forty-foot bi-fold electric door on the backside. And it's also attached to a little office area that we, we plumb. We, we have the rough in, uh, i- i- in the event that we wanted to, um, actually put an office in, you know, at some point. The, the door height is fourteen feet. And, um, so it'll house the king air, most units. And also, you can use it from the backside to pull in smaller aircraft.
So, the fee that is, is this for a future, this, uh, we don't have a jet pod now?
No, we do have the jet pod.
So, there is no charge for that at this point?
That's what we call it, the jet pod.
And do we not have a key for that, other than what's on here? This is a new fee?
Yeah, uh, it was six hundred a month.
Okay.
And then, and then what we did with the airport, we went up ten percent across the board on all of our hangers. A hanger like the jet pod, we bring a lot more money somewhere else. But, you know, we, we're just taking small, just wanting to take all the small steps. If, if you take it across the board and ended it all up, oh, that would increase the revenue for the airport by seventy-three hundred bucks on an annual basis.
That's really all the question I have.
I think, I'm, I'm confused. So, in fourteen aviation, G through L, those are new, those are not new fees.
They've been leased, but they haven't been identified on the fee schedule.
They just haven't been identified on the fee schedule.
Correct.
We've been charging for them, but they haven't actually been, okay, okay. The, the, the one thing that's, that's, that is new, and we've had a lot of requests for it, is we, we have a, a storage unit that, do you remember, when you take the key, and that's the key hanger, at each end, you, you have half of a hanger. So, it's, it's not, you can't really put an aircraft in it or anything, it's a storage. So, what we did was we, we picked that up and offered that out at a hundred dollars a month. Somebody wants to store a vehicle in, we have a lot of people that come in on weekends that leave cars out there, a hundred of this thing. And so, that's, that's what, uh, we, I get, get a lot of calls on that. So, that's really the new thing that we, we added. Let's see, other than that, I mean, we're, we're roughly about half the price. We were, this, this is kind of getting us up, we were about half the price. And say if we wanted to compare it to Burnet. But now, again, it gets hard to compare apples to apples, you know? Burnet has, uh, we just got fuel, you know, four or five months ago. So, I mean, they've got self-serve, they have, um, full sorted fuel. They have an FBO, they have a, uh, a jet center, they have an avionics, um, business there. So, they have a lot of, a lot of support that we do not have. You know, highly away, anyway, that, but, uh, been out there maybe twenty-five years, thirty, and we have never raised the rate. So, you know, it's time that we do. We, we did like say, we're just going to do it ten percent and, uh, see what it looks like next year.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have a question on the golf courses. Um, did any of these go up?
These went through any previous ordinance and have been voted through, preparations were followed. At this time, there's no proposed golf course fee anyways.
Okay, so I'm just wondering what ordinance did the, because I don't see any fees, because I've been having, I've been hearing some rumblings about tournaments.
And different people pay different fees for different tournaments.
And so, um, I've heard that in January, like previously, the school tournaments, I'm looking on page twenty-two, like down toward the, I do see where it's a school tournament for players, and it's fifteen. But, um, I think previously they were paying five, and then I think in like January they went up. But did we approve that? But I don't see tournament, like, I just want to make sure that everybody's paying the same thing. Not necessarily students versus adults, that all tournaments are getting charged the same type thing, that there's not such a, for a group of, or a group of, or whatever.
I don't know specifically when that ordinance was voted through, it was before my time, but I did take that exact ordinance that was voted through and copy those fees onto this fee schedule so that you have an accurate representation of what they are currently.
So, if we do have school tournament for player fees, why don't we have other tournaments for player fees?
On, are you, okay. Oh, all right, so on the, I heard you say something about five dollars. Van actually increased that to ten, I think it was at ten before I got there. If I'm not mistaken, whenever we had done the fee schedule proposal to change, that's when we included that fifteen, from ten to fifteen dollars on that.
Remember in that one? I think that was it. I think it was in March.
I think it was March or April when we did it.
A bit here?
Yes, ma'am. And everything went into effect on May one. And as far as the tournament fees, like across the board, generally what we're doing is we're just charging thirty-seven dollars a head of the weekend, which is our weekend rate. And then, I pretty much tell everybody if they want to do a shotgun, we need to have a hundred and eight minimum in order to close the golf course down because if we're just closing it down for fifty or sixty people, we're losing a lot of money on the weekends because generally, we're going to have a ten o'clock shotgun, which we're losing out on the morning and pretty much the afternoon two times. Because once the shotgun wraps up, that's it. Now, I'm sure what you're talking about or what you may have heard on that part is the Golf Association. So, the Golf Association, what we do on that is, the Golf Association, they're getting charged twenty dollars. So, ten goes to the golf course and ten goes back into the Golf Association, which then that money is actually there for me to have access to if there's something that we need. Like, the other day, we had a repair that was needed on the pump station. I didn't have it in the budget. I went to the Golf Association, asked them for the money, and they graciously gave that to us on there. I don't disagree that we need to go up. I've been saying that for the Golf Association, but it is something that we have, I have spoken with the Golf Association about because I didn't think that that is too low. But that is not, I mean, I've got to get it to them first, then go to the Golf Association board, and then I will come to you off at that point on that. But the way that it's set up right now, that is how, that's what they've been doing for quite some time. Now, as far as the thirty-seven dollars, I base that just off of the weekend reed speed where I can't put that down.
Well, I think it, when you have a tournament that comes in and shuts you down on weekends, if you're charging just what you would charge your normal player, it seems like, it seems like you should actually charge more because the weekends are your prime time and you're going to have players out there, then what would you charge? It's just, because if, if a, a group didn't know that you were having a tournament and they show up to play or to try to get tee times or whatever, they don't get to play at the, the course that's shut down.
The other reason why I did it that way is because they're also renting carts. So, a lot of times with that thirty-seven dollars a head, as opposed to one person coming in and renting just one cart, a lot of times they're pairing up all carts. So, then we're charging for, for a full price of cart, where, you know, you get walkers on the weekend. So, it's got to be really truly fifty-seven dollars for a green speed in a cart, is what we normally get on weekends. But I just figured since if we can set it at that one oh eight, which is what I've told people, you're going to have a tournament out here and it's going to be a shotgun and it's going to be a hundred and eight people, we're going to need to charge for the one oh eight. If you've got eighty show up, we're still charging for the one oh eight. One oh eight is a base minimum, anything above would be out of it, because they're making money on this tournament.
Right. But I just didn't see the fees until like the transparency is not there that I would like to see.
To my knowledge, of...
The first reading of the ordinance, meaning golf course fees, was on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. And the second, the consent approval of that ordinance was at the first meeting in April.
I don't, and as far as I know, we don't have any term fees or stuff, that's something I would like to work on right now.
Well, you do, you have student tournament fees on there.
Student tournament fees, yes, but I'm saying is, you were saying tournament fees across the board.
Right, well, we do have student tournament fees.
Well, I hear the golf tournament fees.
We should work on that.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am, no, I understand what you're saying.
There is also a requirement for any fee increases to be put in our newspaper, within fifteen days of the increase, or going to council, so for transparency purposes, and we are, we have followed every step of those increases.
And then I have one more question to bring up, um, it's kind of random, but on the sum, the student summer fees per month, we only allow the students there in June and August only, June through August only, but if the way school is starting, do we, because we don't, the kids are done with school like halfway through May, and basically they start halfway through August. So have we considered shifting that in like a pro-rated May and a pro-rated August and all of June and July?
We could shift the dates to be mid-May through mid-August.
Yeah.
And identify those as the month.
Just because, because I've been told that the kids aren't like allowed to even be out there unless they're a member other than the student membership after school's out and before June starts.
Well, if you're on the golf team and they're they're in school, then you still.
Yeah, but then there's like a two or two plus week gap in between these, the way our school, the way our school calendar is falling. And so then the same thing in August, it's because the kids are starting so early, like you know, August fifth, August sixth start date, well, then if they're on the team, then it just needs like a shift, and I don't know if it was important or not, I was just asking it.
We need definitely, we need definitely change some of this part in the school, this part of the school. Most people, most people pay it all at once, just because it is associated, I mean, it's thirty dollars a day, yeah.
Yeah, oh, it's true, that's very reasonable. So it's not thirty dollars a month, it's just thirty dollars a month?
Probably, yes, and it's thirty dollars a month, but they get nothing to be called on the future.
Right.
Any other discussion?
All right, we will move to item number three, discussion regarding waste water treatment plant solids handling improvement. Good evening, Mayor Council, this is the solids handling in workshop session for discussion, if y'all have any questions. We have Mr. Jones, uh Mr. Jackson Jones here from Jones Zewoy to go over the timeline and budgetary issues, if y'all uh want to discuss that.
Sure.
I want to see the presentation, let's go.
Thank you, Mayor Council, I'm hoping we get our presentation, so you're not looking sideways. Right, uh so last time we talked about this project, uh first of all, I want to introduce my team, came here with John Tewor, uh Zach Grissel, and Mark Graves, both engineers worked on this project, good to meet you guys, see you. This is good news, we've got a, yes, yes, but I don't have any control here, do I?
But you don't, you don't miss it.
Where's your name?
I was just on this point, I just. Alright, the last time that we were here in front of you on this project was back in May twenty-seventh, when you ordered the engineering contract for the job. Uh since that time, we confirmed that you got a EPA grant, uh the grant is in process and awarded to the city, we got confirmation of that in September. Uh significant grant, we expected it to be a million dollar grant, and that's what what we got, so that's good news. Uh the grant has got a timeframe, it started in June first, twenty twenty-five, and June twenty twenty-seven, just ten dollars. And just to kind of recap, we had split this project up into two, two pieces, because EPA grants got a lot of strings attached to it, uh one of those being American Iron and Seal. And the equipment that was purchased for this job project is made all over the world, um so we're gonna, we're gonna bid the equipment first, and then bid the civil building second. And that'll be what the grants are paid for. Uh just, we're gonna, since we had authorized what you would expect to see in thirty percent design phase, is some survey of the field. Uh so we got our survey done, kind of figured out where we're gonna put the facility, uh we've sat down with staff, and we've gone through different equipment options, I think we're all in agreement on type of equipment that we want to purchase for major items in this job. Uh really, it's a pretty simple job, uh but it's a good one to kind of start with, because it's first one, your staff isn't taking this size a long time at this site. So we're excited to kind of leak you through this, and I think that's exciting, to see it come together too. So we'll just kind of go through the site plan, so look at some of the equipment that you got on the ground now, and the pros and the pros equipment. I want to walk you through our thirty percent design phase budget, and and uh schedule moving forward. This is a shot of the existing wastewater plant site, where the solids handling component of your facility is now, and and also the pretreatment facility for HAPN. Uh the right side of this picture, as you can't see, is the main municipal plant, that's a one point five MGE plant. Uh just as a rule of thumb, solids handling, sludge dewatering, it's kind of the redhead of set jobs, wastewater plants. And that's really what you got here too, it's it's not uncommon for this to be a case. Uh the the Bullseye plant there was original to the city, it's in reversion for some, some kind of digest or sludge spolting tanks. And then the little square building there that's um just to the right of that Bullseye is the existing belt press building, it was it was built originally to the plant. Uh belt press is a pretty big piece of equipment that's jammed in that building, not allowed to run the work around it, of course, it's twenty-five years old, and it's got its issues, and that's why the city wanted to architect this project. Uh but since uh that time, we've figured out where we want that building, what site baby's gonna look like, how we're gonna enter the enter the building, drop off dumpsters, pick up dumpsters, that's that's the other ninety percent of this job, is just kind of getting around it, figuring out how it was gonna flow. I think we've got that figured out. This next shot is a little closer look at the inside of this building, it's oriented the way it was on the uh first slide, so north is up essentially. And inside the confined area of the building will have the dewatering equipment, which is that screw press number one. Uh along with that, there's some polymer feed pumps, and which gets blended with the sludge before it gets pressed. And the sludge pumps there are what pump the sludge from, is totally thanks into the unit, uh so basically solids go one way, water goes the other way. And solids go into the dumpsters there, the dumpsters are gonna sit out on kind of an open pad that's got a cover over it, and we're gonna fill the dumpsters with a conveyor on the outside of the building, and that open canopy is where the trucks will pick up and drop off the dumpsters. Uh it's a quick kind of elevation view of the building, uh it's cinder block or concrete block building, so we can get around some of the American Iron Seal requirements. Concrete block is much better than a sealed building, and I think that we're gonna give it a good cost, uh with the grant funds, it'll be there forever. It's a pretty gross environment sometimes, so that's, it's a good fit. When you roll up the walls of ventilation in this building, uh to do the things that we need to do also. Where we decided to put this building is right on top of this existing old original building that's original to the plant. Uh what used to go on in here were the blowers on the backside, and actually the original administration office for the city's wastewater plant. And you can see the old electrical service for the original plant, it's still kind of standing, the old poles, so I think this is an opportunity to get rid of some old, old and down buildings, uh and some old electrical services, and improve the site greatly, and clean things up. There's, this is the biggest building, there's a couple of other buildings that you build away, make this project happen, and city staff, I think, is gonna help, I guess, with that, with that effort.
We're in the middle of asbestos containment in this building right here right now.
That'll be a good thing, get get that building off the site. And we've got some concrete paving around this, ideally we would have concrete paving all over the flat site, uh knowing that that's expensive, we can always bid that as now, to kind of be aware of that. Uh this is a shot of the existing belt press, if you've never seen one or never seen this, it's a pretty interesting uh site to see, really it's that belt conveyor system rolls through a number of drums and tightening suspension type setups, so that it basically presses the water out of the cake as it goes through there. And what you see in the front of this is the dewater sludge cake that falls on the ground, and right now, city staff picked this up, a little by the way, with a skid steer, and they manually put it in a dumpster. Uh also, I've been told that in order for this belt press to run, it must take somebody standing there next to the whole time, make sure the belts aren't getting out, getting out of line, and polymer feed's not off, and it just, it takes a lot of, takes a lot of manpower to run. I mentioned that it's an old piece of equipment, uh parts ordered on are available, so that when it does go down, they have to be custom ordered, okay?
Yes, understood.
Um the issue with that is, every week this thing's down, the wet haul costs for the sludge is substantial. Uh if you stand next to this thing, what you see is is a continual waterfall of water coming out the bottom of it, that you're not hauling off, and so paying to haul that water there is significant. And the longer this thing sits here, the more that's gonna be an issue. It's also got a limitation on capacity, um as your plant grows, you're gonna, you're gonna outgrow the capacity of this thing. But at the end of the day, it is a, it is an asset to the city, and it is something that you, you got a pretty good working order right now. Uh the goal is to leave it in place as a backup unit, um and maybe even a, if there's a, city wants to take a week off from pressing, they can run both of these guys in parallel. Uh because it's gotta be there while this is being constructed anyways, and so we're gonna work around it. But we feel it's it's worthy of of continued upkeep and maintenance, just to keep it in place as a backup, and extra capacity if you need it. Because pressing the sludge is kind of a batch process, you store it up in these digestors, and then quicker you compress it, the less time the staff's gotta work, right? So if you run these presses two of them in parallel, your press time is really reduced when you're staff. I put that, we'll rerun this guy in parallel, but that is an option for the city. Okay. Uh it's, sludge pumps, uh these are, these are called double disc sludge pumps, and they essentially pump a a slurry of solids up into the belt press. We're gonna implement a very similar type of pump on the new building. Uh this has been proven equipment, and we're gonna use the same technology for the new building. Uh I'm not gonna claim to be an expert in sludge dewatering, it's it's hard to find one of those guys, the best ones, the ones that do it for twenty years. And so we've been doing uh the best we can to communicate with your operation staff, and look at what they're doing now, trying to implement the things that work into the new project, things that don't work.
Jason, I have a question. On the existing dewatering equipment slide, is that, how many times a day do you run that, or is it continuous, you said that they do it in batches?
Yeah, how long do you run that? It can run for about a week and a half before it takes a nice little break.
It runs for about a week and a half, solid in time, eight hours a day, and then, like Jason said, we'll we'll empty the digester, and then it takes time to fill back up.
And the water that you remove, where does that go?
It goes back to the head of the plant to be retreated, and once it's retreated, it goes to creek. He's not allowed.
Uh this is a pretty critical piece of equipment here that feeds us, mixes with the sludge before it gets pressed, it's polymer that it basically allows that water to release from the sludge, it's 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 um when you squeeze that sponge, you want the water to come out right, without the polymer, that wouldn't happen, stuff would just kind of slip off and go all over the place. Um there's been a lot of learning from city staff over the years, these polymer feed systems can be a little panicky, and and kudos to Seaman for figuring this out. Um well, it doesn't look like much, there's a lot of thought that goes into this thing, and we're gonna kind of learn from his experience in trying to implement something simple in in this case too. Uh another issue that city staff's got right now is, this creates a lot of drums, empty drums that are kind of laying, laying about. They've also got to have a place to wash out these drums, that's really not a place they have it right now, so we're gonna provide a place to clean out the drums and store them. They make pretty good trash cans at the park, I understand too. Alright. Uh this is a piece of equipment that we're looking to install, it's gonna replace the belt press. We're gonna bid this against the belt press, because it is pretty expensive piece of equipment, we're gonna keep everybody honest. And the procurement process that we're gonna go through, this is called a screw press, by the way. The procurement process we're gonna go through is kind of qualification phase, procurement process, which considers staff time to operate the thing, you know, maintenance time. Building footprint's a big one, these buildings are expensive, if you need a larger building, then you're gonna have a bigger cost, even though your capital cost is lower. So we're essentially creating a matrix to make a decision when we bid this equipment, uh it's a big one, they're just a little bit. Uh so the uh, this is a, is a huber screw press, inside, which you don't see here, is basically an auger uh type apparatus, if you've ever lifted grain up in the top of one of these grain bins, the inside of those pipes has got an auger in it. That's what's going on inside of this thing, the water and the sludge mixture comes in the bottom end, and then the dried cake comes out the top end as it goes up to press. And of course, there's two options here, one for for water, and one's for the for the for the mixture. Uh the equipment bid package will include everything that this guy needs to run, including the sludge pumps and polymer feed system, and the conveyor to get the sludge up into the dumpsters, and I think uh we've we've been visiting one of these in Vernon, at their wastewater plant, super impressed with it, uh Mark Graves has got some marriage with these guys. But one of the things that struck me is city staff, so they turn it on, get it set up, and they walk away from it, and it runs eight hours. We're not, not having anybody standing there next to it, it'll run, it'll do its own backwash, and it's and it's a really, seems to be a trouble-free piece of equipment. Uh something else is a system to kind of, when you're filling this dumpster, imagine you've got a pretty heavy dumpster sitting there on the concrete, and if you fill up one end of it, well, the other end is empty. A lot of times that's a manual process, to shove these dumpsters around, pull them with a winch, and as you fill up one end and fill up the other end, right now, you've just got a skid steer, and it's easy to evenly fill the dumpsters. Uh the automated process that we're looking at, this is one of the options to move these dumpsters while they're being filled, let's say, call it the dumpster conveyor. Real creative with our language here. And there's a lot of benefits to this guy, uh again, reduce staff time, it can actually be automated, if this thing's filling, it can move itself, when it's working, it's probably working great. Uh the only downfall of this, it is a patent system, it's a little pricey, so we're gonna bid it as as an alternate bid, and price up some other options, when we do have the equipment bid, so we can make an informed decision.
Did y'all get to see one of these things in Vernon too?
We have not seen one of these, this is something that the um equipment supplier presented to us as a, as an option. There are a few of them in Texas, but I have not seen one. This is kind of like shopping for a car, you know, you get out there, and you see all these bells and whistles, and our budget goes like this, and then we gotta rein it back in. This is our current budget for contract A, the equipment procurement stage, and first item is 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 what we definitely need on this job, it's six hundred twenty thousand dollar item. The second one here is a dumpster conveyor, uh this is two side-by-side units, uh which are about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars apiece, and that's the three fifty thousand dollar number there, uh so that's what we want to really get the handle on, before we recommend spending that money. And contract B, this is the EPA grant portion. And so total project cost for contract B is two point five million, we expect to take about a million dollars off of this for the city's cost. And total project cost A and B is three point eight million. When we went into this job in May, we were thinking this is gonna be about a two point five million dollar cost for the city with EPA grant, three and a half million dollar total, so that's what I'm speaking to there, we're we're busting the budget right now, so we need to rein it back in. We're definitely, got to put it in mind with the out of the bids, and do some things differently on the building design, lower the cost if we do choose to pick the high equipment cost. Schedule, this is contract A schedule, uh there's a lot going on here, and this is kind of sort of a recap of where we've been. The highlight here is, next month, we expect to have bid documents on the street, and prices in hand for the equipment, maybe by the end of the year. at about the end of the year. Give us about thirty days to evaluate that, come back to you guys in January for a recommendation of what for the equipment. That has got a pretty long lead time, but once we get the shop drawings, once we award the equipment purchase, essentially that's all that's gonna be, the city's just buying the equipment. Of course, with the warranty after it's installed, right? So the idea is for that equipment to be on order whenever we bid the building. And the second, the next slide here is the last one, is contract B schedule. And there's some things that are kind of tied into the schedule here. But when we bid the building and the site civil, we wanna have that equipment essentially on order, know exactly what we're gonna get. So we're designing around it, you've got the most efficient building that you can have. And any contractor walking in the door knows exactly what they're gonna be installing in the building. I don't think we're gonna have the equipment sitting on site when we open bids for this job, for this piece of it, but we'll be close. Construction period for the building, this is not a super complicated job. So we're thinking a two hundred and forty day total construction phase with about a six-month period where you're really out there working. Any other questions?
Yeah, on this conveyor system, you had it set up for two dumpsters, exactly like dump two dumpsters at the same time?
No.
This is a dumpster?
The idea is sort of to fill one and then switch over to the other. And we've been working with staff too to make sure we've got kind of a place for dumpsters to get staged. One of the things that they've been dealing with is if their hauler doesn't show up to pick up full dumpsters, then what do you do? You shut down. We're trying to build that into the job so we can at least move a full dumpster out of the way and put an empty one in front of it, some city equipment. Thank you, appreciate it.
Y'all are all invited to come out and see ground on the belt rest building. I know some of y'all have been out there, but some of the newer ones haven't. So if y'all have time, y'all can come on out and we can visit the site and touch some of the various stuff if you want to.
It's not really a date.
Thank you.
We'll go to number four, discussion regarding getting added on the regular session for our cover twenty seven, twenty twenty five.
I would like to discuss item four point six. Before you go into your presentation, I have some questions.
Yes ma'am.
Because in reading through the presentation, I don't understand, I don't, I don't understand the benefit that we're gonna get because we're such a small community and I don't see, and we're a giving community and I don't see the point of hiring a company that's gonna take twenty to twenty-five percent if we decide to do something like this, when we could do this in-house.
And so I'll outline it in detail in the presentation, but just because we are a small city, there are some very sizable contributions that have happened in the state of Texas in cities that are comparable in size, so under ten thousand. On top of that, parks and recreation, as well as the entire city, will get a true valuation of the, or the kind of our, where we stand financially and in comparison to other cities with our parks, green spaces, and any facilities that we may have in the future, to include the pools, to include all of our parks. On top of that, with some of these companies I want to talk about, that have been kind of headhunted by Sportsman Solutions, they are such large companies that employees ourselves would not even be able to get a foot in the door with some of these companies, such as Ford Motor Company or Coca-Cola or Verizon, for example, are some of the examples. And so those are three pretty critical points. The amount of man-hours the department itself would have to put in, we do not have enough staff for, to be able to put in the amount of man-hours, as well as not having, you know, the background and these very detailed contract writings. And so this company also writes the contracts for all of these third-party sponsorship opportunities that we would be able to take on.
Can you start at the beginning of the quarter, do we hear?
Absolutely, so, I'm sorry. The goal for tonight is for me to give you the best possible understanding of the action item on the agenda later this evening. That way you can make the most informed decision on this particular contract between Sportsman Solutions and the city.
What does Sportsman Solutions do?
Sportsman Solutions is a company that, you can go ahead and go to the next slide, Monica. Sportsman Solutions is a company that will go out and seek sponsorships for the city of Landpasses on behalf of the city of Landpasses. And so, for example, go to the next slide. We are, they, what they will do is they, we will enter potentially and hopefully into a contract with Sportsman Solutions. What they will do is they will go find companies that are interested in getting their name, image, and likeness, kind of similar to what you're seeing right now in Division One athletics. And they will, for a price tag based off their valuation of our facility, that company will want to put their name maybe on the front of a facility, all the way down to maybe just a banner on the backstop of a ball field or even in the outfield of a ball field, maybe on a bench at a soccer field, for example. Maybe they have, you know, their name marketed on all of our promotion materials for a certain event, and so on and so forth.
So this would be maybe HEB having a five eighty complex?
Correct.
To have maybe the sign on the dugout?
We already have an HEB field?
As an example, it could be First Texas, it could be Walmart, it could be any of those. As an example, they would be getting their name out there, they would pay the city, the Parks Department, some funds in order to get their name, as basically a marketing tool for them.
Correct, and so, next slide please. This is based off of a sliding scale tier commission. The city of Landpasses itself does not pay Sportsman Solutions a dime. What will happen is, for example, company A wants to put their name on the five eighty complex. Five eighty complex powered by Gatorade, for example. That company will turn around and pay Sportsman Solutions. Sportsman Solutions will give us seventy-five to eighty percent of that amount. They will take their cut off of the top of that contract and then the city will receive the remainder of those funds.
Again, we have a local company that wanted to, sorry, again, we had a local company that was interested in naming the five eighty complex. So why do we need to sell our stuff out when we have local people that want to give and we wouldn't be having to give away twenty-five percent?
Do you know off the top of your head the amount of money that that company was wanting to give us?
No.
That's what I was gonna ask you, what type of, are they willing to pay into the market of our size?
They were willing to pay ten thousand dollars for five eighty.
So can Monica, there's a slide, name five eighty naming rights?
This was, this was, uh, Sportsman that was willing to take that down?
No.
No, it was a local business.
Okay.
So I have a city, this is an actual contract with the names redacted off of it, from the company. A ball field with the exact same acreage of the five eighty complex that is a city in Texas with a population of twelve thousand three hundred people.
Double our size on that.
Double the size. Yet, it is a five-year contract in which they are interested in paying us eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. This is, you know, a city of double the size, yet again, even if we halve this number, we're still looking at a very sizable contribution of four hundred or five hundred thousand dollars in comparison to ten thousand dollars if that's what that company was. And so we're looking at significantly astronomical numbers in comparison to what local companies are looking to put their name overarching complexes. So.
So then, so then some big, let's say, just Gatorade comes in, we're gonna do the Gatorade five eighty complex. But the little, the little guys, the real people here in town, wanna put banners that can support the teams. Can they do that, so?
Absolutely, so they're.
Cause you were talking about banners too. I mean, I guess you can tell I'm pretty against this right now.
Correct.
Cause I think, I think we're not big enough for this yet.
I respectfully disagree because these are cities that are of similar sizes. We're looking at ten thousand and less, around ten thousand and less on these, well, that's.
My question would be if they come up with a company that State Council doesn't agree with?
So.
Can we say no?
You can, yes. This contract that's going to council tonight is simply to get into a twelve-month agreement with Sportsman Solutions. Now, every contract, say company A wants to put a banner on every outfield for every baseball and softball field we have. If it is a company that we don't agree with for any reason, we can decline that contract at no repercussion whatsoever. And so, and that comes at no fine to us at all. And so we are at no loss if we accept this contract and then decline every single contract that is brought forward.
What happens when Sportsman starts calling our local people, which has happened in the past with other companies like this? These companies call the local businesses and say, hey, will you sponsor the, just cause I'm seeing golf people out here, the golf team? And would you, or a football team, would you have your name on a sign? And all the money that you're gonna give is gonna go to that organization, but it doesn't all go to the organization, all the small percentages. Because they, these companies tend to not be transparent.
I have personally, in other cities that I've worked with, worked with this exact company. And to fruition, and I can tell you with certainty that this is one of the most transparent companies that I have worked with. They, they, the contract that we have has been read in full by our legal team. It has been vetted and multiple people have read through it. And again, there is no financial contribution from the city that is for this contract. The only thing that we can do here is financially gain from the Parks and Recreation Department.
So if you have a hundred and ninety-three and thousand dollars on payment one, then down to a payment three, if it was all down to eight thousand dollars, what, what's the variation?
This specific contract, and I put this as an example for five eighty for the specific reason of in the original plans for the five eighty complex, there was the potential to expand into the area behind where the existing ball fields are. This exact city, the company wanted to expand that ballpark for them. So this money specifically, I think, is for two clovers, so eight total ball fields for an expansion on that complex. And so the eight hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred was, was the cost of the eight ball fields for them to put their name on the front of the complex for five years. And in turn, they gave them the exact amount of money to do the expansion. And so that's why it says payments instead of years. And so that was just the way that the contractor basically sent invoices to that city.
Eight hundred and forty thousand five hundred dollars, that's for a total of five years, is that what this is?
Yes, and so, can you, go to the next one, please? So this is another example, and I'll break down the numbers for this one. This is a comparable city in Nebraska of approximately fourteen thousand people. Ten-year agreement in which Pinnacle Bank, which is actually a bank kind of out of Texas, Texas of London, Nebraska, any event that was city sanctioned and at this park for a ten-year time span was sponsored by Pinnacle Bank. And in turn, they received twenty thousand dollars per year for ten years for a total of a two hundred thousand dollar contract.
Okay, two quick questions. First, where is Sportsman Solutions located?
Sportsman Solutions, I'm almost certain, is in Iowa.
Iowa, okay. Second, how's this one in front of the Parks Force?
This one, did you do the Parks Force?
When?
Last week.
Y'all had a Parks Force meeting last week, who presented at the Parks Force?
It was a couple of weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
I would say.
What is the Parks Force saying?
Parks Force, they didn't go make any decision.
Did they give any kind of, it was just a presentation, they didn't give that feedback?
They, they did give feedback. It was mostly positive, again, they had a lot of very good questions like they're asking right now, you know? This is a new upcoming thing in Parks and Recreation, but as of twenty twenty-four, Parks and Recreation across the nation, their income is most, is now mostly generated through grants and through sponsorships versus through fees and the general budget. And so a lot of Parks and Recreation departments are now pushing for these large-scale sponsorship opportunities. And so they had a lot of the similar questions that you have, are there any repercussions if we were to deny a contract? Any sort of no? And they, and they had overall, once it was explained to them, they had a lot of good feedback about that and they, they were, it was a lot of positivity.
So I have a friend who is part of our baseball association in town. And he's been pushing for something similar to this for a long time. Not this specifically, more of just like local businesses supporting the local fields. And for some reason, there's been this holdback in trying to get, you know, storms, whoever. There's plenty of baseball fields, you know, all over, and he's been trying to make this happen. There's this pause of him to get this done, I don't really understand why, but then there's this big push, or I think this is going through no problems. I'm kind of confused about how that would be held up from the baseball association to get those local businesses sponsoring a field, but then this being a lot of push here so easy.
So, are you asking like why they had issues with you or not, or?
Yeah, if they're, if they've already had this idea of a sponsorship on a field, why does that propose as a no compared to what we're doing here?
Again, I have only been here a few months and so I'm unsure if he declined to, you know, do this, any partnership opportunities in the past. But once it was thoroughly explained, even, you know, Katelyn and I initially had to have a conversation of, you know, this, what is this? This is almost so new that not a lot of people know about it. And so I think a thorough explanation to the Parks Force was able to get them on the yes side versus the let's kind of hold up side.
And this is such a much bigger expansion of, it sounds like to me that the local businesses that we have helping out is different than this. And I, under this, as I understand, local businesses could still help and sponsor and provide services.
And through.
But not through this, because it's a much bigger scale.
Yes, and so the sliding scale actually favors sponsorships that we already potentially know of, somebody brought up storms. And so that's where.
You know, we already know of it, so if we know this and they're willing to do it, why are we giving away twenty percent? That's my point, is it's like, right now, we could do something like this in-house. We're not being twelve thousand, fourteen thousand people. We, you know, we could do something small to start with before we start going to get outside corporate sponsorship.
Is there a way that we could have something posted like, hey, we're thinking about doing this idea? How much could y'all wanna give to sponsor a field? And just give a rough estimate about how much money we'd commit annually off of our local businesses before we decide to do something like this?
And I definitely think we need more research and programs.
To this point, if the, if the company does not wish to reach out to a local company and they're, they are looking more for these national brands, we can still be doing the legwork on our end for these smaller companies. So if the, right now, so say if we entered into this contract over and over one, for example, and the company said, you know, we're gonna be looking at X, Y, and Z companies. It's, storms most likely will not be one of those companies because they're not these national branded type of companies.
Let me ask you this, you've got a total of eight hundred thousand dollars, I mean, and I kinda see that. Let me ask you this, you've got a total of eight hundred thousand dollars, I mean, and I kinda see that for our markets, a little bit of finance tag. All right, we enter into a contract, and they come back and say, well, a hundred thousand dollars, that's about all we can do in this market here. Are we still obligated to that contract?
So.
We entered it, we have the, we're entering it, right?
Right, because I don't, I don't wanna cut our local guys out.
Correct. So.
And, and then they come back and say, well, you know, a hundred thousand bucks, that's all we can do?
So, the first part of this contract, even before it's signed, if we were to say, you know, we're looking at moving forward with this, Sportsman Solutions is starts, going to start giving us a valuation based on, um, the facility. So, um, City of Colleen, which is where I came from before here, is currently in a same, the same contract with Sportsman Solutions, they're on the tail end of it now. What Sportsman Solutions did, from my personal experience, is if somebody wanted to put their name on the front of a facility, which was the pool on Ransier at the time, they did everything. They counted how many cars went by each day, they counted how many people visited the facility for the past five years, and they give you, based off of the attendance and based off of the traffic, a very true valuation of this facility is worth, based off of this calculation, four hundred thousand dollars.
Well, that's where I feel like the disconnect is, is because you're talking about Colleen and you're understanding it with Colleen. Colleen has four, or more now, is it, not four. Four or five, you know, they have these, you know, five A schools.
They're way bigger than we are.
With what a good part of it.
Mm-hmm.
So that's apples and oranges.
Correct, but we have very comparable cities, as examples, you know. Again, some of these, I have several examples in this slide, some of them are, you know, five thousand people, some of them are twelve thousand people. And so, we're still seeing these large numbers, and then I also have included several smaller numbers for just backstop signage, outfield signage, in which people are paying upwards of twelve to twenty thousand dollars for.
Here, here's one thing I know about, I mean, Boys and Girls Club, they can raise four or five hundred thousand dollars in the back, one minute. Spoxo, FFA, seven hundred thousand dollars just last year. I know our creative badge builders was close to a hundred thousand dollars. I know that our community can start these ball fields.
With all the money going back to our community and our community, and us supporting our community partners, not Coca-Cola or Ford or, you know, I'd rather support Hop Power than more because he is that community.
Or Bush Chicken.
Or Bush.
And so, with these smaller, with these smaller Hop Power or Bush's Chicken, they, if Sportsman Solutions had, doesn't enter into contract with them or doesn't show interest in them, which based off of the examples here, if they're gonna go for those larger banks, larger chain restaurants, we can still enter in these, into these smaller agreements on our own with these other companies.
Well, with the larger banks and these chain restaurants that aren't in this community, why would they want to be in this community as a name on a building if they don't even have any vested interest in our community?
Advertising for expansion is one, um, I mean, for, just for example, I know we're going back to Colleen, but they, uh, posted signage for BNSF, the rubber, for, at the water park. And they, that was a hundred thousand dollar contract. And so, you know, when they first came to me, I said, why is a rubber company wanting to put their name on a water park? It was just for, straight after passing.
It seems to me that this is a really no loss for us if we were to enter this contract. We can turn on, down all that. So I'd like to see us try the idea of going out to a bigger market, um, just because it's, it's available to us and we could kind of partner that with what we do. See, I'm.
I'm afraid of being part of it. We enter, enter this contract, but we're gonna fraud of ourselves with the local guys, the local guys, you know, who have their name. Another point I'm bringing up is, in every, uh, example you've given us, you've backed the cities to buy, why are you hiding the cities? It's always, always easy for a purpose that you can't look, you can't spend our time looking that up out of that information you're giving us.
Sportsman Solutions, just because it is a legal document, didn't protect some of the cities. Um, I do believe some of these do have examples of cities, just the ones that I'm sure, um, have, I do have some, actually, I did put all of the contracts I have as standards in here. Um.
A lot of lots of references for entering a contract.
I guess, I, I really think we need a lot more information before we enter this contract. I'm not comfortable with entering into a contract with, with that information, or cities of twelve thousand to fourteen thousand. Where are they located? Where are they close to? Because if you're talking about a small city inside of the suburb of Fort Worth, it's the same size as we are, because there are cities up in the Dallas metroplex that are small in size. That's not apples, I mean, just because there's seven thousand people like we're seven thousand people, they have a completely different market than what we have here.
The, so I do have some contracts in front of me, so I'm gonna name all some cities. Um, Beatrice, Nebraska, which is seventy-six hundred people. Um, entered into a two hundred thousand dollar, five-year contract. Um, Prime, the drink company that every girl's lawyer is crazy with right now. Um, a fifty thousand dollar, five-year agreement to put the logo on an outdoor basketball court in a city of two thousand and twenty-five people.
I think our local businesses do that amount, also, you're giving us this eight hundred thousand dollar figures.
Mm-hmm.
And here we are, back to fifty thousand dollars in five years.
Again, the goal of this is parks and recreation needs to move into a more modern e- economy without making one diving, every single citizen of one asks. And so.
We're not arguing that, we're just saying, give our local people the first shot and let's test it out locally before we go to some company in Iowa and start handing them twenty-five percent.
Other, other than Colleen and this area, are there any other examples you can give us where they have actually impacted the community? Not Nebraska, or Kentucky, or North Dakota, but here in Texas.
McKinney is another one, I know it is a larger city. Um, McKinney is in the, has entered into an agreement with Sportsman Solutions before, and.
Something similar, yeah. McKinney's not even very close.
Correct.
And that's what we're asking, as you can see.
Mm-hmm.
Because we have the Badger Field over here, and if you've been to the Badger Field, you see on the south end, we have banner upon banner upon banner, local businesses that have donated money to the Touchdown Club, and that's how they get the name of the scoreboard and the thing. So that's the default there, is we already have had this. And I don't see anything that's providing this big lump sum group wouldn't come in here to a local, small community when we already have it placed.
Do you want that to be how it is initially?
The banner, I believe, it's fifteen, I think it's fifteen hundred for the, for the banner. And there's, the whole thing is full.
The quarterback club, they have all different prices tiers.
Yeah, but I mean, for that banner, I think it's fifteen hundred a piece.
I'm interested for the, on the, because there's different prices for, to be a tournament sponsor or anything on what it is that you're doing.
That's what I'm saying, the banner, I think it's fifteen hundred, I don't know if any members are here.
They have, I think they also have different, uh, pricing for advertising on the, um, scoreboards.
So we have, I mean, conservatively, at least fifteen and twenty banners. And you're talking fifteen hundred a piece, that's a lot of money that's just on the people. So I think, and we didn't have to pay twenty-five percent to come in to do that.
We are, again, looking at a much larger scale than twelve to fifteen hundred dollars at a time. Early numbers are suggesting that, just based off of early, early numbers, that the five-eighty complex could go for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that is just based off of the city population, how many people drive the road on an average day.
Have they, have the numbers are charted?
Not yet, that is just based off of numbers, the early numbers that they have. They can look up the average people that drive on the road. Um, now, they, that can be much more detailed once they come in, but that, that is very early numbers. And again, even going back to the company, uh, who sponsored it for eight hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars, you know, that's, even if you cut that down by a fourth, the most recent individual I talked to about sponsoring including their name on the five-eighty complex offered twenty-five thousand dollars. Then we're looking ten times that for some of these sponsorships and opportunities. And so, we're, we're definitely looking for that larger target market in comparison. That way, we can upgrade our facilities and compete with all these other cities around us. Because right now, we do not have the, the space in our parks and in our ball field areas to accommodate, you know, larger tournaments. We, we could be bringing in tenfold on a tournament weekend if we had additional ball fields. And this is, this is the type of money that we need in order to do that.
All right. Thank you. All right, we give a motion to adjourn workshop session.
I'm gonna move.
Take it. All in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, we could take about seven, ten minutes break. All right, we'll call a record session to order. All rights. That's right. They're hardly followed, we're grateful to be in this great building tonight, this great community to represent a lot of people, makes good decisions, and, uh, hopefully be good for our entire community, and that's always the goal. We're especially grateful for the chill rains that we had on the last few days, and we think you had no damage within our area. We asked you to deal with this tonight, let us pass some information, make some good decisions. Watch over some safety till we convene again, and as always, in Jesus's name, we pray amen.
Amen.
Please join us in a pledge.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And honor the Texas flag, and our allegiance to the Constitution. Our safety, under God, one indivisible.
We've got a, uh, few proclamations and presentations to say. Uh, first one up is a municipal court week. And I think we have our, our judge here tonight.
We do. And our two court courts.
Okay.
Go ahead, Turner and Testa Ruben.
Well, thank you guys for being here, and thank you for all that you do.
Indispensable.
A resolution recognizing the importance of municipal clerk, the rule of law, and the fair and impartial administration of justice. Whereas municipal court plays a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting the quality of life in Texas. Whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined. And public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public experience in municipal court. Whereas the City of Landpasses is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on principles, and independent, fair, and competent jury judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and that the judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence and integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Whereas municipal judges are bound by the law and the canons of the judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of governing body of the city council, city officials, and employees. Now therefore, we have resolved by the City Council of the City of Landpasses, Texas, the week of November third through the seventh, twenty twenty-five, is hereby recognized as a municipal court week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the Municipal Court of Landpasses. Asked and approved on this day, twenty-seventh of October, twenty twenty-five.
Wanna take a picture?
Sure.
Aaron, you here to join us? You can get Aaron here.
Yes.
Yeah, is he ready? All right, thank. Okay.
In recognition of National First Responders Day, and, uh, if you guys could all stand up. See if you guys back there. Chief Congressman's already said, and Chief Taylor's thanking you guys. Whereas the safety and well-being of the citizens of Landpasses are the utmost important to the prosperity and livelihood of our community. Whereas the first responders, including police officers, firefighters, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, and other emergency personnel bravely and selfishly serve our community, often putting their own lives at risk to protect and save others. Whereas these dedicated individuals are the first to respond to emergencies, natural disasters, and other critical situations, providing essential service and support for those in need. And whereas National First Responders Day is observed annually, October twenty-eighth, to honor and recognize the individuals' contributions and sacrifices made by the first responders across the nation. And whereas it is fitting and proper to acknowledge and celebrate the bravery, dedication, and commitment of our first, of our local first responders who work tirelessly to ensure the safety and security of our community. Now therefore, I, who are the mayor of the City of Landpasses, Texas, do hereby proclaim, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, as National First Responders Day in the City of Landpasses, and encourage all citizens to join in and expressing our deepest gratitude and appreciation for the extraordinary service and sacrifices made by our first responders. And witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal that the City of Landpasses will be effect on this twenty-seventh of October, twenty twenty-five. Thank you, guys. Next proclamation is, is Unplugged Texas Day Proclamation. We have any unpluggers here? Oh, okay. Whereas Unplugged Texas Day was created by the Texas Recreation Park Society crap, and, or, and adopted by the Texas Legislature, the Descent Bill Twenty-two Thirty- by the Texas Legislature, the dissent bill twenty-two thirty-two, authored by Senator Adam Hinoza, and sponsored by Representative Ben Bumgarber. And whereas Unplugged Texas Day encourages residents to disconnect from digital devices and engage in outdoor play, recreation, and community activities offered by local parks and recreation agencies. Whereas on average, Americans spend over seven hours per day in front of springs, contributing to rising rates of inactivity or mental health and sleep disruption. And whereas parks and recreation facilities such as trails, open spaces, pools, recreation centers provide a safe and accessible place for people of all ages to unplug, be active, and connect with danger and one another. And whereas research shows that time spent outdoors improve mental clarity, reduces stress, and increases physical activity, and fosters strong community bonds. And whereas the city of Landpasses values the vital role that the parks and recreation plays in enhancing quality of life, health, and community connection. And whereas the city encourages residents to participate, and Unplug Texas Day by visiting local park, engaging in screen free play, and enjoying recreational activities with family, friends, and neighbors. Now therefore, I, Herr Pierce, Mayor of the city of Landpasses, do hereby proclaim October the twenty-first, 2025, as Unplugged Texas Day in the city of Landpasses, and encourage all residents to celebrate by unplugging from technology and plugging into Texas' abundant parks and trails and recreation opportunities. Given under my hand and seal of this office on the twenty-seventh day, October, 2025. We have some public circus recommendations to the statement. First one, Brandon Kettler.
Uh-huh? No.
Thank you. I'll come stay with you. Pretty good, eh?
Mr. Vance, Fims, fifteen years. And the last fifteen years is Mike Leder, and he is not here. So thank you guys for your great service to our great city. Thank you. We'll move on to one point O, public current area citizen's comments. I think we have three of them tonight. The, Mr. Mike Wilson. And we do have a three-minute time.
Yes, sir. I'll make this free. My name is Mike Wilson, Frontier Waste Solutions. We're your current solid waste provider. I'm just here introducing myself. One week taking on the contract about six months ago, and I kind of got the kinks worked out and got the daily collections where they need to be. Obviously, it's a Q and business, we make mistakes from time to time, but I assure you that we're pretty flexible with the starters coming back and chasing after stuff. So I just wanted to say thank you. We appreciate the work that you guys provide, we appreciate being with the community, city staff, it's great to work with, and just want to express our thanks. And if you're at TML, please look us up, I'd love to see you.
Appreciate you guys, and I've heard nothing but good on your service.
Right, thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
Mr. Steve Papp.
Yes, thank you. Hi, good evening. So first off, I'm in the seat now, just to put the cat out of the bag, I'm a congressional candidate, running for US Congress, US House of Representatives, and Texas Thirty-First Congressional District. Just wanted to stop by and introduce myself, I do go to city council meetings, commissioner court meetings, and typically I take notes, this is the first time I'm actually going to start introducing myself to the council members and to the cities as well, but I'll start off by telling you a little bit about me. I am a veteran and I have a story to mention. I was injured in a shooting incident, there wasn't a shot or anything, but I had lost a lot of hearing earlier this summer, I was not planning on running in any office in particular, and I have gotten a chance to go to the Temple VA, use my VA healthcare for the first time in a very urgent manner. I took twelve days, two ER visits, no treatment from the Temple VA in the central Texas Veterans Healthcare System. That's not why I'm running. Why I'm running is what I saw in those twelve days. What I saw changed me personally. I saw veterans yelled at, my VA staff, VA staff yelled at myself, they wrote up a nurse who had gone out of her way to help me. I saw another veteran discharged from the ER after waiting for four hours, hunched over and experiencing back pain, no treatment, while the staff behind the plexiglass giggles. I'm not joking, I'm not making superfluous comments on this, I was there for it, I witnessed it myself. We've got staff giggling and a veteran leaving because you can't live in the ER, he's got family to take care of, but the rotten cherry on top was a veteran that was crying in the pharmacy line because he couldn't afford his medicine and his groceries in the same month. So I'm a major in the Army Reserve, in the IRR, that's why I get to grow my beard, I don't have to muster anymore, but I did eight and a half years active duty Army, I got out as a captain, I've served soldiers and families my entire professional life, I'm thirty-five now. I thought I could solve that system. So what I want to do, I wrote a one-page letter, memo, to our current congressman, John Carter, if you recognize the name. I'm going to try and change the system from the inside, but that's where I go down the rattle hole and I realize that John Carter is eighty-three years old, filed a running in January, he's going to be eighty-five the next election. And now with the district having been redrawn, if you can believe it, the Thirty-First Congressional District, which now includes the entirety of Fort Hood and all seven counties touching it, has never been represented by a veteran, ever. I went door to door for two months after that to ask people what they wanted from a congressman, and they want fresh blood. So here I am, offering myself to you, telling you who I am, I am a veteran, I'm a Christian, conservative, former police officer, major in the Army Reserve, inventor, and I represented the US overseas in seventeen countries. We do not have another candidate with that experience other than John Carter himself. So I am not trying to push him out, I'm just simply giving an alternative option to the city of Landpasses and to the rest of the Thirty-First Congressional District. And I'm also from a small town too, from Moody, Texas originally, so I understand when you talk about giving a little guy and a little gal a chance and trying to keep little town America little, and that's what I'm for. So thank you. Steve Dell with the B, two Ls, thank you, appreciate it. Thanks.
And Mr. Carl, Evan.
Don't start, just yet. Got some pictures, if you've got those pinwheels. Thank you. I had a stroke, so I don't speak very well. I know the five oh three North Spring, and if you look at those pictures, you'll see the road in front of my house. See, it's totally underwater, and this water runs through the culvert, which is too small, and it plugs up and it runs over the top of the road and runs down my driveway, and you can see the damage there. The water runs across the road and tears up the road. Now Carlos, the city department, has done a great job. He's been at my house more than any other city official. Even there was heavy equipment in the middle of the night, cleaning out the drain so that it never flooded me, flooded at two feet of water in my yard once this year, and it flooded so high in my driveway that my daughter lost her motorcycle. It was a cannon, seventy thousand dollars, and it was completely underwater. And that's the water running across the road and then down my driveway instead of downing the ditch, which runs where Avenue would be. And I have worked with three city managers, they've all said it would be fixed, and it can fix it. It's been over twenty-five years since that we've had this problem, and I would really appreciate your help with this. My insurance company's hired them claims. My house, which is a double-wide mold, has been actually moved from the foundation. Sheriff Blanche has had it, they have three cello again, and I don't know how many more times this can happen, but every time we get a decent rain, that nick fills up, plugs up, and runs over the top of the water, tears up the road, and then the city department has to come out and clean it out, patch the road up, and I've been told by folks at the city hall, even last week, that they are working on the drain from the south side, they're working upstream, which is a good plan, but they said that we're stopping at Race, which is one block short where the real problem is, which is at my street. So you've got the pictures, next time it rains, four or five inches at a time here, welcome to come by and see it for yourself.
So you're on H?
Five oh three North Spring Street. Look, H hardware, turn left, about six blocks, turn left, and there I am.
How many other houses are on that street?
Sir?
How many other houses are on that street?
There are, one, two, three houses. Seven of them, I believe, on my block, and three above on the Avenue D, which is a non-devote street, there are three houses on that. Several years ago, they paved, were working on paving, and they paved Race Street, which they weren't supposed to, instead of Spring. And so they said, we'll get it next time, well, that's been several years. And as Carlos can tell you, it's an ongoing problem, and my insurance company is getting tired of claims. Got seventeen thousand dollar claim on this motorcycle, and my two odd buildings you can see there, which are at the end of my driveway, water was overflowing this deep. I'm beyond my three minutes, and I appreciate your help.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Betty?
Just a couple things going ahead, so we had neighbors coming with us, but they had to leave, they were spoken to short flooding their house, which is across from us. Even the little rain we had on Saturday filled up that creek, and it's, and you have the pictures, I annotated what was from the summer, when it flooded two weeks in a row, and from this week. During the summer, it was up to my son's knees at the front end of our driveway. Going across the street, it was halfway up his shins. I mean, there's something needs to be done at that intersection where Avenue D, the weather cream crosses in spring, because it's just not, it's not acceptable. The road base is coming off, the gravel's coming off, up until just a couple of days ago, we had boards still out on the side of the road that flowed down that creek back in July. I mean, something needs to be done at that area, and, you know, it stops at Race, it's still going to keep flooding through there, it needs to go up at least a summer to be fixed, if not further, but I think going up to summer, we're definitely not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One point two, citizens comment, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter, that is included on the agenda, do so at this time. Yep? Oh. Yeah.
It's all on this.
Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding the approval of amendments as a regular meeting held on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Discussion.
I moved it through the minutes.
Second. Discussion and possible action regarding the first reading of the ordinance amending the Appendix A of the city code fee schedule concerning fees for chapter sixty-six, streets, sidewalks, and other public places, maintenance fees in chapter eighty-two utilities, all of which are further detailed on exhibit A of this ordinance, providing for repeal conflicting ordinance, providing severability clause, and providing effective date. And discussion and possible action regarding purchase and charges in excess of four thousand dollars for twenty twenty-five. Can we separate two point two, could we make some changes on that?
That's for the change? That's for the street ordinance, the waterway's water, and the curfew that it's caused.
Okay. I follow you now. Make a motion to approve the content agenda. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Three point O, courts department reports. I do not have many tonight. Three point two, upcoming special events meetings. October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, Proper Creek, Landpasses Public Library, three PM to five PM. November sixth, twenty twenty-five, planning and zoning regular meeting, six PM. November the eighth, twenty twenty-five, Texas Arbor Day Hostess House, ten AM to twelve PM. November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, city offices will be closed for Veterans Day. November twenty-seventh through the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, city offices will be closed for Thanksgiving's Day. Four point one, new business, discussion and possible action regarding the depository service contractor, financial institutions to serve as a bank depository for the city of Landpasses for a five-year period, begins December the first, twenty twenty-five, through November the thirtieth, twenty thirty.
May I, the council, you have before you the awarding of a bid for depository services. Municipalities at one point were required to go out for bid on their depository services every three years. The last time we did that was in twenty twenty, and cadence was, they sold bidder at that time, and with that, they allowed two one-year extensions, which fits us through to twenty twenty-five. The state of Texas has now amended that, so we don't have to go out for bids every three years, it's got to be five years, which is why the link of this term runs for five years. We did let the, we sent the information out to the three local banks and put an advertisement in the newspaper, keeping it so we see only bidder for depository services. So tonight I have asked the council approve that five-year agreement with cadence for depository services.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the contract cadence length for five-year period.
Second.
Any discussion? More attention? Well, what all goes into this, whatever you've set up?
I have a big packet in my office that I'm happy to show you, but it asks for information on all the services that they offer, what kind of interest rates they're going to offer us for that time, if there's any waiving of fees like lock boxes, EFT fees, any fees generally are waived. I've got the full packet over there, it's about to be paid, so.
Do we know why the two banks?
I do not, I do not, after sending an email to both of the bank presidents there, I didn't receive any response from them, so I cannot reach out to them to see why they did not.
Looks like it's pretty daunting to tell to be that one.
It's very thorough, yes, ma'am.
Shall we have a motion and a second? Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Four point two, discussion and consideration of possible actions approving an updated municipal maintenance agreement between the city of Land Passes and the Texas Department of Transportation.
Mayor and Council, the last agreement that we can find on file for Texas, it was signed in twenty thirteen. This is just an update to the routine maintenance agreement between the city and the state, which outlines who's responsible for what on the state highways and some of the railways within city limits.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the updated municipal maintenance agreement between the city of Land Passes and the Texas Department of Transportation.
Second.
Any discussion? Any chance we can put silences in those third trucks?
I have talked to them about that, asked you the designation of the roadway, um, the, the last. Right, um, it is something that we will work on.
And other lights. And related to the lights as well.
I believe they do the timing of the lights.
Aaron, I can add to that a little bit. So, since we are under the fifty thousand people population, they will maintain all the lights and all that. The only thing that really changes in the agreement is the drainage. So I'll use the Catholic church for an example. Now, the church was completely plugged up, earned in Key Avenue. If you notice when we had that back rain last year, that I've never seen that part of Key Avenue under water till then. And you know where they did the Chevrolet dealership. So now they're responsible, the state's come in, they're gonna be responsible for their state line of all drainage in the city. That's the only thing that's changed.
So it's better, right?
It's better, yes.
They do the lights, they do the lights.
Yes, yes.
Now, the drainage only has to do with their highways, right?
Their highways, yes. Armed market roads, highways, state highways.
Since we're asking about drainage, just out of curiosity, if we know of an area that, how, I mean, how would a citizen report drainage issues in like city-owned culverts?
They can come from the highway, it sounds like.
Yeah.
They can report the concerns at any point in time. Again, the city budget's excellent money. This year it's around around twenty-five hundred thousand um, for street projects, and so all of those drainage projects have to be accommodated within that budget.
Do we have a motion and a second? We already have, we already have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's not me, I don't think I've seen one.
All right, four point three, discussion of possible action regarding the award of a quote for a floor replacement service to Dell Technologies in the amount not to exceed seventy-one thousand five hundred sixty dollars.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, staff is recommending the approval of purchase of floor replacement servers. Uh, the floor replacement servers, uh, were, a request made in the FY five twenty-six budget. The servers will replace two existing servers that are located at the IT department and two existing servers, um, at the police department. All four servers are hybrid dual and end of life, so it's time to replace them. Um, the replacement server is going with Pro Support, which features twenty-four-seven remote technical support, covers software and hardware, max business day, or four dollar tuition critical options for on-site hardware support response, proactive automated case creation, automated issue detection, and system state record collection, and code chat and online support twenty-four seven through sixty-five for three years. If council awards a bid for the purchase of the servers, the city would be saving ten thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars by purchasing, uh, the servers the month of October. Um, we didn't have eighty thousand budgeted for all four, so it is a significant savings if we go ahead and purchase one this month. Uh, these items are covered under the state contract, V I R C P O five seven one-two. Therefore, no additional bidding is required. The V I R contract satisfies the competitive procurement requirements. And additionally, these items fall under the state law, section two fifty-two oh two-two, general exemptions um, under seven D. It procurement of items that are available for only one source, including captive replacement parts or components for equipment, therefore, no competitive, so sealed bids are needed. And staff would ask council to consider a motion to approve the award of quote for floor replacement servers to Dell Technologies in the amount of seventy-one thousand five hundred sixty dollars.
I'll move to approve the award of quote for the four replacement servers to Dell Technologies in the amount of seven, seven, seventy-one five sixty.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Four point four, discussion of possible action regarding awarding a live jacket grant through the Boog U S Foundation in conjunction with United States Coast Guard.
Mayor, Mayor, President and Council, um, unfortunately, I was under the weather the last council meeting, otherwise this would have been brought to your attention. But at the very beginning of October, we were awarded the Boog U S Life Jacket Grant, uh, in conjunction with the U S Coast Guard, um, the Parks and Rec Department with this grant back in, uh, late August, early September. And we found out that we were awarded the full, uh, amount of this grant. This is at no cost to the city. Uh, the Boog U S Foundation will be awarding us one hundred life jackets and information and materials on how to fit those life jackets. Um, there are some pictures in your packet as well as the documents required. There will be quarterly reporting on this, in which, um, a city staff member will, uh, do that quarterly reporting, just looking at the number of life jackets that were used on average, um, if any have, uh, received any damage, and if they need to take any out of commission. Um, and so, um, staff is recommending that council give us the approval to be able to accept this grant.
So these, that life jackets would be available pool, for instance?
They will be available May through September at the pool, and then in the off-season, they would still be able to be utilized. If somebody wanted to take these on a weekend voting outing, they would be able to check these out as well.
Where are we gonna store these? Just curious.
I think it's a good thing left, John, that we're gonna. We have a significant area for storage at Hannah Springs, and so that's my fault. It's, we have an open storage area in the building at Hannah Springs currently, that this would be able to accommodate.
And since these are free life jackets, it's free rental or library?
Yes, and so, um, the idea in the summer months is for as many people to be able to utilize them as possible at the aquatics facility, so we will have them spread, split up decently evenly between the two pools. But in the off-season, again, uh, people would be able to take them out for a weekend voting trip, if that's something that they were wishing to use and for.
So I recommend, make a motion, recommend council authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents relating to the acceptance of the Boog U S Foundation for the five-year agreement and all necessary reporting documents.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four point five, discussion of possible actions regarding the application submission for a grant through the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department for his QR code fitness program on five eighty hike and bike trail.
Again, Mayor, Mayor, President and Council, um, this is a grant that I have been working on, and the final, um, submission date is on November the first, and so we're just looking to get approval to apply for this grant. It would be in the amount of ten thousand and five hundred dollars. Um, for this, we are looking at the five eighty hike and bike traction installed. It's called the QR Fit Program, Trail Fit Program, in which, um, sparse throughout the trail, approximately over half a mile. There will be a, um, post in the ground with a sign with a QR code. You have some examples in your packet that, um, they would be able to scan this QR code. It would take them to an app that is ran by the QR Fit Company, um, and maintained by that company, and it would show them a type of workout. They would be able to select if they're beginner, intermediate, or advanced. And then if they wanna do an upper body, lower body, or core workout. Um, once they select that, it will give them a demonstration video, uh, that the company runs, and they would be able to participate in that fitness program along the trail. Um, and then again, um, the initial purchase of this is only a couple of thousand dollars, but then, um, the grant is to mostly help maintain that app through the QR Fit Trail Company. Um, there is no matching portion on this in from the city. This is a complete grant, and so if we were able to receive this, this would be no cost to the city.
Make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to the Texas Parks and Wildlife program, the high and skirt supporting documents.
Second.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
The grants are ten five total costs for five years, eighty-five ninety. And in the description, there's a one-year quarterly usage reports. Is that where the extra money would go toward, uh? Wouldn't you wanna know what's going on in year two, if people are actually using it?
So the...
Like, we're gonna have to pay more for another year?
We're, for, they grabbed it purchased for five years, so it'd be a one-year renewable for four additional years, and so we will get that tracking data every single year.
All right, I'm just making sure that I, that I read this, and it says only one year of recording. And I'm like, if we're gonna have it for five years, we need five years.
It is, it is in theory renewable every, for four years. We're looking for the money for five years of the program.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Four point six, discussion of possible action regarding authorization of a contract for the city of Land Passes in support of the solution regarding naming rights and sponsorship opportunities.
Again, Mayor and Council, um, this is the contract that we had talked about in workshop, and I just urge you to consider, uh, the possibl, the, um, positive impact that this can have on our community.
I move that we take no action on this until we get further information and research.
I agree. I think we reject our local people first and see it. Kind of funny, you can get there first and, I mean, like, I'm not opposed to, you know, that's, this is a better option, but I'm just, yeah, I think we need more of them.
Yeah, I like the idea of what you're doing, trying to, you know, secure more funds for the city, particularly in the Parks Department, but I, I would like to see, you know, some, uh, local businesses up there versus national chains, you know, uh, just my, my opinion. You know, one of the other things too, uh, to think about is if we have any other outside sponsors, it does take, I, and I can see the, the, the thought process, it does take some of the pressure off of our local businesses to come up to the plate too. Kind of on a slippery slope, and I think we need some, uh, probably a little bit more feedback, knowing what we're talking about. Yeah, I agree with that. Um, you know, certain times of year, there's, there'll be forty people that ask for money right in the office, and, uh, it would be nice to have a little cushion there, but I think local businesses should have the opportunity for it. Absolutely.
Would, in general, your recommendation be maybe bring this back in about three months after we are able to get a feel for the whole?
A lot longer than three months. I think we need to try to do some actual footwork first and see what we can do locally before we jump into something that we're not really ready for.
Mrs. I feel that this is a very good opportunity. It's not a time-specific opportunity, so we can reconsider it, I think. Um, but I do think this is a great opportunity with the assurance that our local businesses have an option.
Three months just doesn't seem like enough time to really come into that.
Just let us know.
Do you have, do you have a number in mind?
I, well, I, I think maybe, uh, have you thought about pitching it to the businesses, you know, putting together something and just kind of blasting it out there?
I have had conversations with local business people, um, and the numbers in comparison to what we're seeing with Sportsman Solutions are significantly lower than what we're seeing in semi comparable cities. And so the numbers you were showing us with Sportsman Solutions earlier, I still don't feel like that was apples to apples. I feel like it was apples to oranges. I feel like the communities were too big, I feel like the communities were in different locations. I think we need a lot more research on what can they legitimately do for the Land Passes, where we're located, and why are we going to an out-of-state company to do this?
I think if you reach out to some of the boards too, like the baseball board and stuff, you know, they would be gung ho, you know, trying to help in this, this city, reach out, so.
And then the other questions too I have is, is things like, you know, Charlie had mentioned earlier. Um, so we've got like the Ruth Aiken Theater. Are we gonna rename the Ruth Aiken Theater? The Ruth Aiken Theater provided by Gatorade? Are we gonna like get rid of the Ruth Aiken name altogether? You know, which is a historical name for our community, W. and B. Park? Are we gonna wipe W. and B. off? Are we gonna rename it the Gatorade Park? You know, those kind of questions I have.
So, um, to answer that specific question, um, when I was in Colleen, we ran into this issue. The Recreation Center was named after a famous Indian football player that was in Colleen at one point and, uh, lived there his entire life. He donated the money to intern build that recreation facility. Um, they, this, this company is very family-friendly, and they are not interested in eliminating any type of historical, rich history that a city has. They want to supplement that, and so for that, they were able to name it, um, the Family Recreation Center with the person's name powered by, I think it was First Texas Bank that sponsored that opportunity.
So I think we have the, the opportunity to reject anything that they want to. So if they wanna come forward and say they wanna change this, we do not have to approve that.
That's where I want to look to the contract a little more, because I couldn't find that.
Okay.
Through the contract.
I could just see some litigation come from that too, if we're rejecting one company and then appropriating another company that are similar, you know.
Yeah, we're, we're heading down a, like a spiral here. Uh, there's a lot of questions to be answered, and I think if she could do the research and get back to us, I don't, you know, it's just her timeline, I don't know if we need to put six, eight months. I think she can do a lot of that in there.
Okay.
So we have to table this, is that what we're doing there?
You have some marching order now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, four point seven, discussion of possible action on the award of construction services contract in the amount of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars six hundred and fifty-seven dollars to Lone Star Flatwork LLC for the TDA project, C D V twenty-three dash O two six seven.
Mayor, I got a motion and a second on the last one, but we didn't get a vote. Can we take a vote on that?
Did we, did we table it?
Do, do you take my action on it?
I, I think there was no action on that.
No action.
No action.
All right, ready? It's my turn now. I'm asking for money now. So this is a, a city community grant that it's been going on for a couple of years. Robin and Mike Claire went up from this called cemetery pit drain that runs off quarter and follows down Avenue D. You heard Mr. Atkins. This is part of that project. And yes, the money does in it raise, but part of it, it, it goes, 'cause we're, we're placing a couple of tin horns up along the way. The biggest problem with this drain right now is that if you go further up summer, spring, there's a lot of trees in the drain, growing in the drain. So what happens when you go through, you go in the drain? Your water's gonna spray it. So in this grant, they're gonna go through there and remove a bunch of trees to make the water stay in the ditch. And they're gonna actually put head walls on these tin horns, 'cause these tin horns don't have head walls or, you know, walls going behind it. So it does spread out with the, with the problem. The whole project, but not much money is concentrated on that spot. So the, the, the bid is, uh, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-seven. So, the, the, the bid is, uh, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven. The C D V G grant that was awarded to us was four hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we are asking the main funding of thirty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven. So add option one includes concrete line and open channel between Avenue C and Avenue B. This was intended to be part of the project, but since the bids came in high, we wanted to do as an add option. So over there, but it's behind the church cross that runs over there, it's a drain. We want a concrete line that, right in there. And then add, add, two was an existing storm drain on Avenue C, basically in like the intersection of Avenue C and Race. So all that water that comes up from that neighborhood up there comes off Avenue B all the way that way. It all comes in behind Rich Johnson's, right through there. Well, it gets on that intersection of Race, and there's a two-story house there that it goes in the house. It goes in the driveway, out, back behind it, and finally hits our drain. So my idea was, when we were talking about this, as long as we got the contractors here, I want to install a storm drain up there at that intersection, so the water goes in there instead of going through the driveway.
Well, the handle, the drain is gonna handle?
Yes, it'll handle it. It's not, uh, if we get ten inches rain, it's not gonna handle. And we've seen that all over town, you know, four and a half inches of rain an hour, that's a lot of rain. But it, it'll help it.
So Carl, so this with some of the floods in July on, um, Avenue C, if it was, um, this would not impact that it, it's up there, don't worry, sir?
Yes, yes, it's, all that's impacted. So all that water, I mean, if you look at the map, it comes off next road, follows all behind there. So you go over to Avenue A, Avenue A will go towards, if I'm not mistaken, it goes towards, uh, the, uh, north. But anything on Avenue A, Avenue B, the opposite side, it all goes to this one channel right here. And it just follows right down, right, going through there.
That eventually flows under Key Avenue?
That, I think, yes, flows under Key Avenue and then, uh, goes out over here by the Honda State Park.
The remaining, I mean, thirty-three, six, fifty-seven. Get to my budget?
Get to my budget.
Or did you plan for this when you put your budget?
Yes, yes, part of it.
So some of the, the work that I understand, some of the work that will be done is closer to, uh, at Key Avenue?
Yes, yes. So, well, and in order to do this right, you don't wanna start upstream. You wanna start up, you wanna start downstream to work, you wanna get your stuff all the way up. 'Cause if you start upstream, there's just no cost of more following downstream. So you gotta do all everything downstream.
Where's, how, how far is this stretch?
So, where this is gonna start, it's gonna start right there on north and water, where it crosses, you know, looks like the church crosses, opposite side. So it's gonna catch that opposite side, and it's gonna be concrete line behind there. And then we're gonna widen that channel on Ridge, 'cause right now, your rain is just busting out of there. So we're gonna widen it, put it, more head walls up to keep it actually in the drain, and we'll follow it around, uh, till we get between Avenue E and Avenue C. So this drain is deep, you know, it's Avenue D drain, basically, it's a simple, uh, creek.
Where does, where does the mo- majority of the water start coming from?
Quarter.
Like, the corner?
Quarter, yeah.
That starts at the corner? And we're only getting up to this part?
Oh, it's going all the way, but as far as concrete line and all that, it's stopping at, uh, partner.
Does this take care of the gentleman's issue, believe, or?
So what?
What else needs to be done to take care of that?
So in order on that one, maybe that could be a change order. I think back to E, this, underneath that road, there will widen the tin horns for bigger tin horns or something on there?
What size polars in this road currently?
Right now, it's one-four.
Jumping, yeah, single, twenty-four?
It's like I showed the size of the cupboard.
It's jumping, it's, it's in the junk, and then, um, another thing is, is you got up on summer, you got somebody that's storing rocks and all that in the drain or whatever, and I had thought for the guy before, I'd get him out. But before he can get them out, of course, you know where to wind up, and wind it down to Key Avenue for it. Do it.
Yeah, well, you might need to use that front end loader to help that get back.
I can do it.
Make a motion to award a bid of construction services contract in the amount of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars to Lone Star Slant Work LLC for the T D A project C D V two-three dash zero two six seven. Second.
And, uh, none of discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank y'all. Four point eight, discussion of possible action regarding restating the regular city council meeting on November tenth, November seventeen, on point five.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is placed on the agenda due to Erin being unavailable to be at the meeting on November tenth, and we'd like her to be present, so we are asking to move it to November seventh.
I move to move on November, to cancel the November tenth meeting and move it to November seventh.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Discussion of possible action regarding city manager to execute all documents pertaining to a thirty-six-month lease purchased for a current twenty-twenty John Deere seven-seven hundred A precision-cut fairway mower and a twenty-twenty John Deere fifteen-fifty with a seven-two-inch side deck rough mower and used progressive tri-deck roller mower for rough.
I don't know that. All right, any made plans to be, uh, I'm hoping to get the approval from y'all tonight on a, uh, thirty-six-month lease purchase for the twenty-twenty John Deere Fairway Unit. I'll sort it out a little bit, twenty-twenty John Deere Fairway Unit. A twenty-twenty, uh, fifteen-fifty deck unit as well as the addition of a, um, the bat wing unit that I talked to you guys about back in, uh, for a C I P I. Uh, the current lease that we have with the twenty-twenty Fairway and the twenty-twenty Deck Unit, that lease was actually on a true lease. The lease expired in January. We've still been paying on that, so that money has actually gone to, I guess, the overall principal, if you will, of that payment, bringing that buyout on that number down. Um, but we only have two Fairway Units, that being one. Uh, our only other option besides this would be to start a whole new lease, which I wouldn't recommend, because the hours that we have on this unit, on the Fairway Unit, as well as the Rough Unit. I talked to our John Deere rep, on average, those units get about six hundred hours a year. The Fairway Unit has seven hundred and fifty hours on it in four years. I don't think there's any sense in letting that unit go for the price that we can buy it out for and look into getting a seventy or, uh, seventy or thirty thousand dollar unit for a Fairway Unit. Same thing goes for the Deck Mower. The Deck Mower has a little over thirteen hundred hours on it, and, uh, the buyout on it, I'll, we can, I'll go over the numbers here and just admit it on the buyout on those two units. Uh, additionally, I'd like to add the Bat Wing Unit for mowing rough. It's a fifteen-foot unit, we had talked about it on the capital item. At that time, this is a fifty thousand dollar unit. John Deere has agreed to sell it to us at twenty. It is a demo unit that was used at a Hyatt facility down around the Columbus area. It probably has probably about thirty hours on it. They will put all new blades, pull all maintenance on it, as well as a one-year warranty with this. And like I said, this is thirty-six-month lease to purchase, so at the end of the lease, we will own those units. So based on the hours, I mean, the motor, and those are, on the, on the Fairway Unit and the Rough Unit, those are decent motors. So they're gonna hold up well. I mean, and, and again, I don't think it would be a good idea to let those go back right now, just given the, given the price that we can buy those for. Um, as I said, that Bat Wing Unit is originally around fifty thousand, they've agreed to give it to us at twenty. The Fairway Unit is, uh, I believe the buyout on that was fifteen? Yes, the buyout on the, the Fairway Unit was fifteen, and the buyout on the Rough Unit was ten, for a total of forty-five thousand. The monthly payment on that for thirty-six months would be thirteen ninety-one. Now, that's based off of the numbers for our last payment in August. We've made September, and I believe October is it as well, so depending on when we pull the trigger on this, will depend on what that actual payment will be. If anything, it should go down. Uh, we're currently budgeted at fourteen seventy with those two units, and by adding the other unit to it, we're actually gonna be another budget, so we would be budgeted for three, so it would be able to purchase, and we would own everything at the end of it. Um, another reason why I wanna hang on to that Rough Unit is, uh, it is a four-wheel drive unit. It is the only four-wheel drive unit that we have, and on the front end, we have a lot of slopes and a lot of malice, so we definitely need something that's four-wheel drive to get all that, keep those areas going.
Do we use for maintenance? Do we use, I, or, or falls or?
We do all our own.
We do our own?
Yes, sir. There is a traveling mechanic that, uh, was actually the head mechanic at Austin Turf and Tractor United Ag for years. He's broke off on his own and does his own thing, so if there's anything major that we need, we call him, but for the most part, we do everything in-house, and, and, like I said, those units are in very good shape. Matter of fact, the John Deere rep said we'd be crazy if I don't go back, 'cause they're just gonna put some turtle wax and armor all on them, put some slaps and new reels on them and sell them for thirty grand.
So Chris, your summary is, uh, short of a novel. Tell me here shortly, what are we buying and what are we paying for?
So we are buying the twenty-twenty John Deere seven-seventy-eight, the twenty-twenty, that's the Fairway Mower, the twenty-twenty fifteen-fifty, which is the, uh, Rough Unit, which is the four-wheel drive unit that I was talking about, that's just a single-deck seventy-two-inch unit. And then the last one is going to be that used Bat Wing Unit, that's a pull behind unit that goes behind the tractor. And our tractors and everything, our hydraulics, PTO, everything is set up for it. Those would be the three units, that way we will own those units at the end of the lease.
Okay, so we're-
It is a true, it's a lease to purchase. What they would, what they're currently on is a, it's a true lease, so they would, we either keep paying what we've been doing and going month to month, or we look into going into a new lease. I'm just suggesting we go to this and add another unit, then we own them, you know, because our hours are so low.
So it would, it would lower our monthly costs by about a hundred bucks or so?
Probably about a hundred bucks, and we'd be adding, yeah, we would be adding another, uh, another unit to it.
So we're adding the fees and going down?
Correct.
I feel like we'd be crazy not to do it.
Yeah, yeah, I thought it was-
My head was just kinda swimming over here, trying to read through this.
Sorry, normally I do the power cleans and all that, I just wanna do it all in the middle of the summer.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute all documents pertaining to a thirty-six-month lease to purchase for the current twenty-twenty John Deere seven-seven, seven thousand seven hundred A precision-cut Fairway Mower and the twen- and the twenty-twenty John Deere fifteen-fifty with seventy-two-inch side deck rough mower and used progressive tri-deck roller mower for rough.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. We get a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Au lieu.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
City Council of Land Passes, City Government Meeting, closing booking session for sheriff and Texas government coach chapter five-five-one.
Not willing to.
Section five-five-one consultation and referral to city and/or state legal advice of council concerning the city, license, regulation, some of the law, the city council to advise the city governing body regarding such matters pursuant to the state law statutes and putting this Texas district area rules and practical conduct of state part of Texas and its compliance laws. Texas Open meeting, that's Ogden World Foods, North America, Afton. Section five-five-one, those seven-four personnel matters to deliberate that one unemployment by wasteful assignments duties or discipline of the public officer employee. City manager and/or other personnel matters is allowed by Texas government code chapter five-five-one. Adjourn into executive session and will be convened into regular session. Run everybody off?
Yes, sir.
Everybody go.
Mr. Dear, the quicker we get out, the easier we'll be with this, so.
I think we have our other council member come up to the, what are we doing?
We're getting out of here.
We're getting out of here.
I can stand out there, John.
Y'all need to get right there.
Remember your I T, that's right. Smile, say cheese.
Nothing coming out of, uh, executive session tonight. Gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
Au lieu. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed?